Fine.
The only question I have, was it on the job?
Nope.
Oh, thank you, Lord.
No, no.
Turn your microphones on, please. We'll call a Benton County Board of Commissioners meeting in order. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Roll call, please, Beth.
Sure. Commissioner Schlangen.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Heinem.
Here.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Here.
Commissioner Pop.
Absent. Excuse, sorry. That's what I meant to say. Thank you. I'm glad I've got people up here looking after me. Prove or amend the agenda. Monty, I see we have a couple of things in front of us.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. So, we'd like to add the use of County Road right-of-way for City of Foley sewer project right after the consent agenda, if we may. Okay. Also, we would like to pull a couple of items. Under 915 County Administrator, the GLT Architect Agreement, I received Friday a substantial number of changes to that agreement, which we need to sort through and resolve. So, we're going to need to pull that one from the agenda. I believe also, and please someone correct me if I'm wrong, we would like to pull the 940 Award of Construction Project for Benton County Fiber Extension. We would like to pull that one as well. And that is, those are all the changes I have, Mr. Chair, unless there are others.
We do have one more under consent, Human Services Benton County Agreement, reimbursement, Sterns County.
We would, if that's on Human Services, we would pull that at that time.
Okay, thank you.
When we have Human Services, yeah. Any others?
Any board members? Changes?
Table at the time. At the time of...
Oh, I understand. Yes.
Okay.
Gotcha.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the amended agendas presented.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? If not, I'll call a question. All in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. County Board, County Board meetings are broadcasted live and video recorded on YouTube. Please refrain from speaking from the audience here and come to the podium so that viewers can hear you. County Board observes Robert's Rules of Orders for its meetings, so please obtain the Board's Chair's consent before addressing the County Board. Public comments are generally reserved for the open forum segment or public hearings. However, public comment on other agenda items may be allowed at the discretion of the Board Chair. As we begin today, please turn off the cell phones or please turn them on and vibrate. Thank you. Open forum, anybody in the audience? I believe not. Nope. Thank you, Beth. Next, moving on, consent agenda item one through five. What would we like to do with that?
Move to approve, Mr. Chair. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? If not, I'll call a question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Next, Foley Highway. Who's going to take that one?
Mr. Chair, if I could just introduce, I asked Mr. Pat Fust to come in from the City of Foley today to kind of give us an overview of where their project is and highlights some of the challenges that they're facing and maybe I just, if it's okay with you, to ask him to come to the podium and do that.
That'd be fine, even though he wanted to sit in the back today.
All right, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thanks for allowing me to come in this morning. I'm Mark Papinfo, City of Foley Department of Works Director. Just a quick update on our project, forced made from St. Cloud to Foley. It's moving along well. They are just about done on the highway except for some minor connection points with manhole air release valves. They've turned the corner and are going east on 50 right now, year 50. I went out there, but somewhere right by County 25, so they're moving along good until they get freeze up. I know we have to work with the county on how long we can keep working because it's affecting the road. Um, and Foley, they started the boring from in our city limits along 25 and then out to the main ponds where the, we'll start our project at. One of the items we've come up with is the connection, the odor control structure. We had worked with, I believe, Chris Byrd to identify a couple of spots and came up with a spot on 30th, 30th Street and 65th Avenue out there on 50. And, and so it was designed that way, the pipe was laid in that way. And, and further going down the project, we advised that, I guess there were some issues with it. And that's what we're, like to talk today is, what can we do to work this out? There's not a lot of changing there, you know, what we can do, it's not going to be an easy fix with the pipe already in the ground going through there. So, I guess that's why I'm here is, is there something we can come up with to resolve this issue or not?
Okay. Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Chris, would you be willing to kind of address where, where you're at with the county end of this? I know that you've had some discussions probably with Michelle and Roxanne maybe and maybe we'll get kind of all the inputs on this and see if there's something we can do here.
Yeah, this, I have to admit, this has been a process. We were approached early on in their design phase by their designer looking for locations and, and what they were looking for for possible right-of-way, there was a couple of different locations and we weren't sure that we had the right-of-way. One of the locations was down by Summerland. It's interesting, all this is related to Highway 23 and that expansion over the years. We weren't sure that we had the, the right-of-way documents there. We found, or actually they found this property for us and we were aware of it. We do know how that was acquired. There's this little triangular piece of property bound by the new alignment of County Road 50 and the township roadway that we own the title for. Mindot acquired the title for that section of property. I believe it was in 2010, prior to their expansion of Highway 23 to Foley. Once that project was completed, Mindot gave us a quick claim deed for that triangular piece of property. So, we essence have the deed for that property. The, the, one concern is the southern border of the triangular piece of property is still an easement. We have not vacated the roadway easement because County Road 50 for us, we, we had the right-of-way in an easement, not in fee title. So, that, that's a concern. If we vacate that easement, what I understand is it automatically goes to the underlying title owner of that property. So, it automatically revert to that adjacent owner or who owns the title below that. The, the triangular piece, since we have the title, I think that maybe, I thought that maybe that opened up some options for us, but that's what I do know, that we have a title for a triangular piece of property that was considered for this odor control station along their, their sewer project.
Chris, what's the size of this odor station that one wants to build on this property, this parcel?
Oh, geez.
Like 22 by 24.
That's the size of the building, right?
But you want to know the size of the property?
Well, that's my second question, but go ahead.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was, I don't remember the size of the property, so.
I do know the original acquisition was 2.55 acres, but some of that acquisition is still, we would like to maintain it because our County Road 50 is still in that. So, it's just a portion of that original acquisition from 2010. I don't recall how the...
And I'm assuming the building does not fit in the easement or the right-of-way inside the property lines?
I think the building would. It still doesn't meet the setback requirements from the, the property lines. I, the, the, the structure could be contained wholly within those parcel boundaries, but it would not meet the setbacks.
Mr. Chair, if it's appropriate, maybe, I'd like to hear from Michelle, I'd like to hear from Roxanne. I mean, is, you're two separate areas. Maybe you can talk to us, Roxanne, first about the setback issue and what that would take to potentially solve it.
Well, first of all, it would have to be outside of the right-of-way. It would have to be on its own parcel. If we're creating an individual parcel, you're looking at the plating process because it's smaller than what we would permit for the parcel size. Smallest parcel size is two acres. I don't think you're going to get two acres. So, you're looking at variance to your parcel size, you're looking at variances to property lines. One of the things that I want to stress is that when I spoke with Sarah Braun, she said this is a dangerous building. I, I don't know that our Board of Adjustments should be granting variances for dangerous buildings. I think this is something that they should be considering in relation to the public safety. We shouldn't be granting variances simply because it's a need. That's not what variances are for. And then maybe Michelle wants to talk to this a little bit more, but our Board of Adjustments is its own body. And so, it's not something that comes before the County Board. And so, they would have the sole right to grant or deny that variance.
And, and just to back up a little bit, there's no buildings allowed on our right-of-way? Is that correct?
Correct. By statute. It's not something that, that we are, it's not something that we have in code, it's, it's in statute.
Okay. Thank you.
Michelle?
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
So, I, as you are aware, I have had discussions with Adam Ripel. We've kind of identified some of these complications. And as Roxanne and Chris have stated, they all present different issues. So, first, you would have to vacate because unfortunately by statute and under our essential services provisions in our code, buildings are precluded. There are exceptions for some telecommunications, small, telecommunications, small facilities, but that is specific to that. What I was finding, what I discussed with Mr. Ripel was, you know, there is a preclusion against buildings, which makes sense. You don't want your distance or line of view, view of other cars oncoming. You don't want your clear zones impacted by buildings in, in right-of-ways. So, it's completely understandable, we're just presented with this unique situation. So, one of the items that I discussed with Mr. Ripel was potential vacation of this property. If we were able to vacate the portion that's owned in fee title, we would still have to go through a process. And because it was acquired for road right-of-way, we have to offer it back to the underlying fee or the new abiding owner. So, depending on whether it was direct purchase, going through eminent domain, that kind of dictate the process we have to follow regarding that property. Now, that is a situation that we have dealt with in the past with Edmonton Trailers. The individuals that we did track down, we're not interested in repurchasing that right-of-way. So, it's not an automatic preclusion. But then you get to the bigger issue, is it even feasible with the setbacks with the processes that we need to follow regarding the development code? So, there's all sorts of complications, all sorts of considerations. We did fully discuss, I mentioned Adam, if he's able to find anything, come up with anything, you know, certainly more than willing to discuss those options with him.
Commissioner Kapinski.
What makes us a dangerous building?
Roxanne, you would have to speak on that one.
Well, and, and I don't know the specifics of it, but that is what was told to me by Sarah Braun. When we talked about, she said that's partially why they wanted to put it in a structure is because these pipes sticking out of the ground and different things cause those pipes to be dangerous. And so, if we're allowing a building to be closer to the road, we're in a sense allowing for a more dangerous structure to be closer to where a vehicle could hit it. Just thought for...
What's the height of this structure? What would be the potential height of this structure?
I, I think it's more a standard structure. I don't think it's anything taller than normal.
Well, what's normal nowadays?
Well, I mean, like a garage.
Right.
So...
I understand.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Kapinski.
My frustration lies with, we've got a bunch of codes that are in place for obviously, obvious reasons. But my concern is, is we're enforcing these codes for something that could happen down the road on an accident, hitting a building, following these setbacks. And, and I sit back and go, we're doing this at the taxpayer's expense. Because if this pipe needs to move and go to a different route, what is that going to cost? I, I just really struggle with that. I think we need to come up with a way to make this work.
Mr. Chair, Michelle, quick question. You said it would go back to the first right of refusal to the property owner before, is that correct?
Correct. Or if we are unable to find them and it depends on, like I said, how it was acquired, then it could also be the first right of refusal to be abiding property owner.
But this first right of refusal doesn't come with a dollar mount tag to it, does it? I mean, first right of refus-
Exactly. It is that by statute.
It does, and what, what would that be?
So, that's either the amount that was paid for the property at the time that was purchased, or I believe the fair market value of the property, whichever is less.
Okay. Thank you. Mark, did you have a chance to see the size of that building or?
Real quick, it's, the building walls are 12 foot with a four-foot rafter height, so 16 foot high.
16 feet high, okay. So, Mark, is there any, is there an option two or an option three yet talked about in this place?
Originally, we had talked about the Summerland site, but that was, there was some, like I said, the clearing of title on that or something. So, that's how we resorted and planned around this one.
Is there any other options out there besides this one then, right now, that you know of?
Not that I'm aware of. Like I say, they'd have to redesign some of the piping.
Which comes at an expense.
Mr. Chair, maybe, how about timeline, Mark? I mean, I realize we're getting into winter, so what's a realistic time that that would need to be figured out?
The, the plan, the plan was to build it this fall. The rafters are here, we're storing all that. Obviously, it's not going to happen. You know, this is not going to be resolved in a week, you know, or something. So, I mean, next spring, right-of-way, we, yes, we'd like to realistically.
So, we're not necessarily under a fire to get a resolution today, we just need some guidance on which way we're going to go here.
I think so.
Commissioner Kapinski.
So, we, according to what I heard earlier, don't even have the opportunity to even act on this.
That's, that's what I'm hearing.
We're the elected officials and we don't have the opportunity to do anything. And it comes down to people that are appointed, and which, nothing against them, but they can choose to not allow this and cost the taxpayers money. Not saying they would or wouldn't.
If I could interject.
Yes, please.
The statute precludes this. So, it's, it's the legislature that has decided that we can't have buildings in public right-of-ways. And there's also the option, and I did discuss this with Mr. Ripel, that they could use, you know, their own funds, and I haven't discussed using their own funds, but they could condemn additional property that would make it meet setbacks. Now, he did mention that there were some preclusions based on some of their funding sources, but I don't know that that precludes them from condemning property using their own funds. That would be something that I would have to discuss further with Mr. Ripel. But that is an option and that is what most cities and most counties do when they are faced with this type of situation. But we are precluded by statute. You know, these, we, we do have an obligation to the public. You are charged with the obligation to protect the public welfare, health, and safety. So, you know, that's why you have all these considerations, that's why you have processes, that is why we have setbacks and why we have, you know, the process of getting those variances. So, it's a lot of moving parts, it's a lot of pieces. It's just unfortunately, the county may not be able to provide a solution.
Mr. Chair, quick question, Michelle, for clarification. So, are you thinking processes, a city can condemn property that's outside of their jurisdiction?
I believe you can condemn property and that would be an option for your sewer lines. You do have authority to do that.
Okay.
We condemn property in cities.
Kind of feel like we're back in the ditches again. We have, we get to make decisions and we have no say.
Yeah.
Only here, we don't get a, yeah, never mind.
Mark? Go ahead.
Real quick, I just, it's this chemical we have there, the proprietary name is bioxide. It's a calcium nitrate inorganic salt solution. It's inert and non-reactive. So, that's what the chemical that is stored in that building for the odor control.
Okay.
We can get you the SDS sheets on it if you want. How far off the road would this, would the front of the building be? I don't have the footages. Okay. You guys were never emailing the map, Commissioner Johnson? Have you seen the map? I mean...
Yes. Yep, I don't...
And it could be set back of some sort if need be, but still, it's not going to make the 65, 125, you know, but that building could get moved around there some.
Well, and it sounds like according to Michelle, our first snag is we can't put a building on there anyways.
Right.
Unless it's vacated and they get everything in place for setbacks.
So, if, if that property was vacated, what about the easement?
That's still a problem. I mean, then the, the city would have to go to them to see if they could acquire it through direct purchase. So, they could ask these, these neighboring properties if they could purchase directly the additional property they need. So, that's always an option. He said they were just potentially precluded from eminent domain and not direct purchase acquisitions. So, they could technically go into that.
Okay.
So, they do have some options, hopefully.
Well, actually, we don't.
We, we got the county, they got the county.
Correct. Okay.
Can we, can, sorry.
Go ahead, Commissioner Kapinski.
Can we be assured that you guys will continue to work on this for the city, whether it's through the county or through, I mean, we just got to find a way to get this done.
I mean, if they contact us, we will certainly respond. It doesn't mean that anything will change, but certainly we'll have those conversations.
I don't know.
It's, yeah, it's a big letdown.
Well, just, just another interest, interesting situation we're facing right now.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate the update.
Anything else on this one?
Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you for that, Michelle. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, conduct a public hearing on a minor final plat entitled Mayhew Lake Southeast Shores. Before we open the public hearing, we will first hear from county staff. Roxanne.
One second here. Okay. The first plat before you is the plat of Mayhew Lake Southeast Shores. It's a two-lot plat along Mayhew Lake. This, Bernie Jansen is the property owner. And this is a little bit of a unique situation in that they are allowed to plat underneath the water of the lake. I know myself, Michelle, and Jay Whitstock, our surveyor, has, had spent considerable hours researching this to make sure that this was appropriate. And it, they do by law have the ability to own the lake bed. And so, that's this case. Each of the lots has about two and a quarter dry buildable acres. If you include the lake bed, each one's about six and three-quarter acres. Mayhew Lake Township did review this plat. They tabled it at their October meeting because they had concerns and questions on ownership of the lake bed. We've since talked to them, explained the situation, and they are agreeable to the plat and do plan to act on it in November. Each of the properties does have a septic site. And one of the conditions of Mr. Jansen is that he did have to give up his feed lot status, and that's because the feed lot does extend all the way into Lot 2. And so, if he plans to have a dwelling, a building site there, he would have to give up his feed lot status. That being said, Mr. Jansen does own a considerable amount of property here, so if he did decide to continue operating, he just would have to shift slightly to the south, but he was well aware of this dur, during the plating process.
Okay. Is the applicant present?
No.
I know they're not in-house here. Are they online?
No.
Okay, now we'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes, wishes to address this? Or anybody online wishing to address this? Anybody willing to address this issue? Jeff?
I guess I just have a question on this. If that, if this is considered their land, then is our dock going onto?
No.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Nope. So, they don't own the water, they own the lake bed. And so, it, any, but the public, the water is public, public property. But if that water were to ever go away, they would own the land underneath it. So, it doesn't give them the right to go in there and do anything underneath the water. It's, it's simply a ownership of the lake bed.
Okay, final call for anybody wishing to address this, both online. Okay, we're going to now close the public hearing. Is there any emails, letters, communications to be read into the record?
Mayhew Lake Township did review it, as I had mentioned. They tabled it at that time and do plan to act on it on, at their November meeting.
Okay, has the department received any comments or concerns from the state agencies, cities, or townships, which you've already addressed the township?
Yep, sorry. The DNR did review this and they were part of the discussion on lake bed ownership. And they have no concerns over this and do agree that ownership of the lake bed in this particular situation is accurate.
Okay, any official action was required by an affected township? And you've already expressed that already. County Board will now have time for questions and staff and discussion. As a reminder, the audience, the public hearing is now closed. Any questions or comments or concerns from the board at this time?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Kapinski.
We don't have to wait for Mayhew Lake Township to act on this?
No.
Okay.
No. Because you won't actually be signing it until after their, their date.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to move to approve the final plat of Mayhew Lake Southeast Shores and authorize the board chair to sign.
Second. So, we got a motion and a second, any further discussion on this? If not, I'll call a question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Roxanne. Next, we will have another, conduct another public hearing, a minor plat entitled Pepping Addition. Before we open the public hearing, we'll first hear from county staff. Roxanne?
Okay. So, Pepping Addition is a plat in Watab Township. Watab Township does have their own subdivision ordinance, so any plat containing two or more lots is required to go through their subdivision process. This plat was approved by Watab Township on August 15, 15th, 2022. The lot is roughly, well, it was roughly 14 and a half acres and they are plating that into two lots. Each of them, one, the one with the existing house is eight acres and the new lot would be about five acres. There is a significant amount of wetlands on this property. And so, we just made sure that each of them does meet the requirement of one dry buildable acre. So, each one of those does have that. Each of them does have a septic site, will be an alternative septic site just due to the higher water table. The DNR did review this and they do not have any comments on it. We did have a gentleman appear at the meeting. He lives across from Lot 1. He did have concerns about drainage. I just want to note that we, we do not have the authority to direct drainage off of properties. But that being said, this property will be required to flood-proof its home, whether it's through concrete block and flood venting or bringing in fill. If they're bringing in fill, I know that there will be concerns from the neighbors, but our floodplains do- from the neighbors, but our flood planes do account for the amount of fill that's being brought in. Many of these homes were built prior to floodproofing requirements and are practically sitting on the lake bed. They're at the elevation of about ten-sixteen or ten-eighteen, and our lake bed elevation is ten-sixteen on Little Rock Lake. So it's unfortunate, but these homes, most of them, homes cabins, are nonconforming and not meeting our floodproofing requirements. But the ability to construct on these lots is a property right for these owners, and so they're following all of, not only our rules, but also FEMA's rules, the DNR's rules, all state and federal requirements.
Thank you, Roxanne. If the applicant is present, I believe I seen you online. If you would like to address the board at this time, please give your name and address.
Hi, this is Pete Pepping, one-one-zero-four-three Westlake Road in Rice. Yeah, we're just going to try to build a smaller house for my wife and I, and hoping we can get this passed through today.
Okay, thank you. We will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience or online that wish to address the county board on this agenda item? Anybody online or in the room wish to address this agenda item? Final call. With that, I'll be closing the public hearing. Is there any emails, letters, or concerns or communications to be read into the record?
No.
Has the department received any comments or concerns from either state agencies, cities, townships on this agenda item?
Watteb Township did act on this and approve it on August fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two, and the DNR did review it and had no comments, other than to just ensure that we are floodproofing the septics to our best ability, which is something that we do in all of these cases around Little Rock Lake.
Any official action was required by affected township, which you already explained by Watteb. County Board will now have time for questions of staff and discussion. As a reminder, the audience, the public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, questions, concerns?
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the final plat of Pepping Addition and authorize the chair to sign.
I'll second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Pete. Next, Phil Miller, county attorney. Phil, are you online?
I do not see Phil online, nor here. I would think, though, he would probably appreciate the board would still act on this request, even though he couldn't be here. So I think you see the action requested a motion to accept retirement resignation effective January third, two thousand twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next, give me a minute. Monty, consider adopting benefits advisory committee recommendations for non-union employee health insurance rates.
Our BAC Chair Jackie Trout would like to present the recommendation.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I am here today as the benefits advisory committee chair. So as you know, MMA has recommended that we increase our funding by twelve percent this year. So as the BAC, we have the opportunity to decide how we want to apply that increase amongst the plans. So if we wanted to, we could apply that increase more heavily on one plan than the other. So the BAC met and decided that we wanted to equally distribute that increase across all the plans, so that is what our recommendation would be. I did include with this agenda item what the premium structure would look like, and that's taking the historical cost sharing example, splitting the cost fifty-fifty between the county and the employees. So that's just kind of an assumption there that's being made with that chart. So the only thing I ask is you approve our recommendation of evenly distributing the increase amongst all the plans.
Thank you, Jackie. Commissioners, concerns, questions for Jackie?
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval of the BAC recommended two thousand twenty-three health insurance rates for non-union employees.
Second. We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Jackie.
Thanks, Jackie.
Have a good day. Next on our agenda, consider installing Wi-Fi network to serve the Benton Beach campground. Monty or Jeff?
Well, Mr. Chair, this is a topic that's been long discussed by the park commission about getting Wi-Fi. And I think most campers typically expect Wi-Fi when they go into a campground, and we hear that from our campers. You know, as you may have observed, the Benton Beach campground seems to be busier and busier each year and often full, of course, on weekends, and you see the large RVs, and those folks tend to expect to have Wi-Fi. So Jeff got a couple of estimates, one from Systematic and one from Tech Check. Systematic was the lowest quote for the installation of a router network out there. I spoke with Benton Communications. They would be the actual internet provider, and as I recall correctly, it's about ninety dollars a month for the actual service. And the nice thing is we could start it in May and shut it off in September, so just pay for the months that you needed. So of course, you can see, the biggest cost is really installing the router network out there at Benton Beach to provide Wi-Fi. I think it's appropriate to use ARPA funds for this because, you know, it's essentially a broadband service that we'd be providing there. And just one last thought for you, and that is the park commission's going to be discussing camping fees on Monday night, and this, I think, should have some bearing upon the fees that we would charge. If we add amenities, it's most likely there should be some adjustment upwards in the fees help cover the cost of this service. As you add more amenities, that seems appropriate. So Jeff is here, Steve is here. Do you have any questions for us?
Any questions from the board at this time?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Gopinski.
I think that this is very much needed, and I think it'll pay for itself two times, three times over, over the course of the year. So I'll move approval of the installation of the Wi-Fi network at Benton Beach Campground and start internet service as of two thousand twenty-three camping season.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? So when you raise the fees, is that going to recoup the cost?
I'm not sure. I think we'll have, that decision will await kind of what comes from the park commission. Fee setting, I'm not sure necessarily is a science. I think you look and see, okay, what are other county campgrounds charged? For example, what does Two Rivers charge? Saint Cloud Campground here, you know, outside Saint Cloud. No two campgrounds the same. So I think in essence, it's somewhat of a judgment call of what seems reasonable, appropriate for our amenities, a county campground, and so on. So I think that's a general goal, sure. We want to make sure we cover our costs to run that campground, but you have to consider, you know, what will the market bear and what other campgrounds are also charging, so.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Gopinski.
I think from my standpoint, I should clarify my comment. By keep, by having Wi-Fi in there, it is going to somewhat help keep people coming back to that campground, and whether the fees go out dramatically to cover this cost is one thing, but if we can keep that campground a lot more being, or being used more, it'll cover that cost that way, too.
Yep. I would have to agree. And I'm assuming everyone, every camper's looking for Wi-Fi regardless.
One thing, too, I think, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we see more longer-term folks that are staying out there. It isn't just necessarily the weekend, or it's people who stay for quite some time, and I think in that circumstance, they definitely expect to have Wi-Fi because, you know, we all do, do our banking, pay bills, et cetera, et cetera, so.
Any other questions from the board? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I'm happy to pause at this, at this time, if you would like to do human services board meeting or forge ahead. I just wanted to make that offer, if you wanted to forge. Pause for human services.
Mr. Chair?
Move ahead. Keep moving ahead.
Moving ahead?
We're going to, we're going to forget you pausing, and we're going to move ahead.
Move ahead. I just want to be...
Next, consider forestry management agreement with Bob Perg...
Pearlyburg.
Pergleberg.
Pearlyburg, that's right.
Pergleberg for a selected timber removal at Benton River.
So of course, I think some, several board members and the park commission met on a very cold, windy day a few months ago to hear Bob and his proposal to do forestry management for us. And here's the big picture. As you know, you've got the windbreaks on the east side of County Road Fifty-Five and Benton, Benton River Park. And there's a old, a lot of old trees in there, trees are falling down, so on and so forth. And I think the park commission was quite concerned about doing some things to maintain the health of the existing trees, thin them out, remove some of the older trees, the dead trees and so on. So the way I understand, we became connected with Mr. Pearlyburg is initially, Jeff was contacting some commercial loggers about them coming in and doing a removal. And I believe one of those, he actually suggested, hey, I think you should probably talk to Bob Pearlyburg. As you may know, Bob is a retired DNR forester, and he offers a unique service here. So he'll come in, he'll help us secure the services of a commercial logger. Then during the logging itself, he will mark which tree should be removed. Then, when the logging occurs, he will monitor what's being taken out to ensure that the county gets paid what it should get paid, and then he tallies it all up at the end. And his compensation is, I believe, thirteen percent of what the logger pays us. If I recall correctly, some time ago, Jeff got some estimates from loggers about what we might get, and I remember numbers between about fifteen thousand, about twenty thousand of what the county would get for the wood that they're removing, and he would then get thirteen percent of that, that payment. So there really isn't like, there's not like out-of-pocket cost for the county for this agreement. He just gets his percentage of what the logger would pay the county. So I think, you know, again, that's the essence of the proposal. I know there was attempts to work out an agreement between Mr. Pearlyburg and us, and ultimately, Mr. Pearlyburg said, look, you know, this is my agreement, I hope you like it, but this is the agreement that he said he was comfortable with to enter into this engagement with us. And I believe in the packet, you should have, I believe you should have, I asked Michelle Myers, Assistant Attorney, to review Mr. Pearlyburg's agreement and then provide to you her comments in a memo, which is in your packet. So that's kind of the story, Mr. Chair. Again, Mr. Pearlyburg has said this is the agreement he's comfortable with in order to do this work for us.
Board members.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to move to approve a forestry management agreement with forester Bob Pearlyburg between businesses Foresting First LLC.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. I'm assuming that's to accept his version.
His version, yes, thank you.
Yep.
So I just wanted clarification on that.
Thank you, yep.
Monty, do we need that in the motion to accept his version of the contract?
I think that's fine. That adds additional clarity what the board's doing, yeah.
I'll amend that.
Yep.
I'll amend, too.
Okay, so we amended it, and we're all, both the motion maker and the second who are clear with that?
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion on this, board members? If not, I'm going to call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries.
If I understand correctly, Jeff, he wants to, I think the work that actually might happen this winter into early spring, is that true?
That's correct.
Yeah.
To get the top pricing for fertile logging, being that is a road that doesn't have a whole lot of restrictions, or it's a ten-ton road, I believe, but we're able to get our best pricing if they would do a winter cut or a spring cut, because, you know, that's when a lot of loggers are going to have their hands tied behind their back and not able to do a whole lot. So we do have an advantage with that, that that'd probably be the best time to do it.
Great. Thank you for your work on this, Jeff. Appreciate it.
It's a good time, too, because there's fewer people visiting the park, and of course, we'll make sure that we do everything we can to restrict access to that side of the park and keep folks away, so it's as safe as possible. So, Mr. Chair, I believe there was, we pulled the GLT agreement, and I believe the last thing on my agenda is the appointment of an interim county engineer, public works director.
Mr. Chair, I just want to cut to the chase here. Without a full board here, I think it's imperative to us to maybe table this decision till November first. This is not in any way in opposition to this appointment, but I think in fairness to the full board and fairness to Commissioner Pop, especially as one of the senior members, that he's here for that discussion.
I would agree with that.
And I would agree with that, too. So at this point in time, we probably need a motion for this.
So I'll make that motion table till November first.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next, we're going to turn it over to the Human Services Board Chair, Commissioner Johnson.
You, Commissioner Heinand, will call to order our Human Services Board. Bob, any changes or amendments to our agenda?
Yes, I have two additions. The first one is an agreement between Stearns County and Benton County, and the second one is a truth, update on a truth initiative newsletter.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Okay.
I'll move to approve with the updated...
Changes?
Changes. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve our amended agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, carried. Consent agenda items one through four, is there a motion?
I'll move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve our consent agenda is presented. Any further discussion? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, consent agenda is carried also. Bob, agreement with Stearns County?
By the way, thank you for holding off. I was ill-prepared to have the board meeting a minute or two ago. I think I have one other thing here before that, and that would be AmeriCorps.
I'm sorry, yes, my mistake, yes.
That's quite all right. This is an agreement with, between AmeriCorps and Benton County. As you may recall, in June, we asked the board to consider us hiring or bringing on three AmeriCorp nurses, and this is the paperwork that goes along with it. So this is an agreement between Benton County and Public Health, excuse me, AmeriCorp. So it's, I would ask that you approve that.
Okay.
By the way, just as a footnote, we were not able to bring on any of them, and I don't, it's going to be hard for us to bring them on, but I think the preparation here, that we do have the contract in place so that indeed we do get one, we are ready to go, so.
I'll move approval.
Okay, motion to approve.
A second.
And a second, any other discussion in regards to that agreement? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, carried. Now the agreement with Stearns County.
All righty. This has been in place for quite some time, and it's basically something fell behind or fell off the radar of somebody. Anyway, it's an agreement between Stearns County and Benton County, although Career Solutions, otherwise known as Stearns Benton Employment Training, had this contract. So for whatever reason, it fell off everybody's radar, so we're trying to re-initiate it here, but what it is, is they, Stearns County provides payroll services for Career Solutions, and they want us to reimburse them for our share. So that is what this agreement is about, is an agreement between Stearns and Benton to, for us to reimburse them for payroll services.
All right. Mr. Chair, so I sit on this board, and it came to my attention that, I think it's been two years, it was overlapped without a contract, you know, and they approached me about that, and I went, I don't know nothing about this, apparently. I just assumed the contract was always in place yearly. With that, I'll approve the contract to reimburse Stearns County for services provided to Career Solutions on behalf of Benton County.
I'll second that. Any other discussion in regards to that agreement with Stearns? Hearing on all those... Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that's carried. Next item, Bob.
Okay, and I'm gonna ask Mariah, Mariah Klein, are you?
She's on, she's on, she's online.
Yeah.
Mariah, you wanna talk about the, uh, truth initiative newsletter and how Benton County was highlighted in that?
Mi- Mr. Chair, I. I, I thought it was very important, cause I asked Jaclyn to present this to the board, so I'm glad Mariah can do this.
Morning, commissioners, I just wanted to provide a quick update, um, our Benton County Public Health Team and the Tobacco Work Group, um, in relation with the recent changes and updates to our county's tobacco ordinance that was recently passed at the September twenty-sixth board meeting. Uh, and those changes will go into effect January first, twenty twenty-three. But the Benton County Board of Commissioners and the Benton County Community were recently highlighted at the national level for their tobacco policy work in an October fourteenth truth, truth initiative newsletter. Uh, Truth Initiative is America's largest nonprofit public health organization dedicated to a future where tobacco and nicotine addiction are things of the past. I just wanted to provide a quick update, as we have received nothing but positive comments and feedback in relation to the tobacco ordinance changes. And again, we wanna thank the Benton County Board of Commissioners for your leadership, um, on this health and form policy change. And we will pro, continue to provide updates like these as they come in.
Thank you, Mariah, and again, thank you to, you know, right on down the list, Bob and Sandy, Jaclyn, Mariah, Jenny, all the, these that were, all of you that were involved in this process, really appreciate that, so thank you. And thank you for highlighting that.
Yep, great job.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Mariah.
Thank you, have a good day.
That is all I have unless you have any questions for me.
All right. We'll adjourn our Human Services Board, I'll pass it back to Commissioner Heinon.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, now we'll reconvene our regular board meeting, next, Chris, Chris Berg, but I guess we pulled that one. Okay, next on our agenda, Commissioner, meeting updates. Get your stuff out. Who wants to start?
I'm ready, Commissioner Heinon, if that's okay with you.
Please.
Right, uh, October fifth, uh, Commissioner Kapinski and I were involved in the emergency management director, uh, interviews, that, that went very well. Interesting, my, it was my first time sitting on an interview process for the county, so, uh, I learned a lot in that, in that process. As was presented today by Roxanne, we had a planning commission meeting, uh, Thursday the seventh, and we also obviously reviewed those preliminary plots on the planning commission side that we acted on today. We did have our broadband bin opening, uh, on October twelfth, and I, I see that we are putting that on hold, uh, today as far as the results and moving forward there. Uh, Commissioner Kapinski and I and Amanda were able to attend the Granite Ledge Township meeting and present the broadband initiative to them, and I think that was very successful. Um, they're appreciative of it, and we are very appreciative of them in the results they've had in getting their township built out. Uh, Commissioner Kapinski, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think they had, uh, was it seventy-three left to do, or was it forty-three? It wa, it was a minimal number like that.
It was, it was minimal, they were.
Finished, and they had over a seventy percent take rate.
Yeah, I think it was forty-three left.
Okay, so they've done a great job up there, I just wanna highlight them and, and it was, it was good to be there. Also, uh, Mr. Ebner was at that meeting talking about, uh, the turn back to County Fifty-four to the township, so, uh, that was, uh, accepted. And I appreciate his, uh, willingness to come there and communicate that to him, I think it was, it was well taken and there was some good discussion, so. Also, last night, Commissioner Kapinski and I and Amanda attended the Sock Rapids Township, uh, board meeting, uh, for a broadband initiative discussion too, and which was, uh, they had a lot of great questions. I had to leave a few minutes early, but it sounded like it wrapped up pretty well, so, that's all I have, thank you.
Are they pretty much built out in the Sock Rapids Township?
No.
No.
Surprisingly not.
Hmm.
There's a gap in there.
Because that's Benton Tello, right?
Yep, in between there and Charter.
I think really we're looking at Granite Ledge, Alberta and Graham are the, probably the most built out townships in the county.
Then next would be Langola, probably.
Wow, I find that surprising, but.
Yeah.
Yep.
Interesting, okay, thank you, next. Commissioner Schlangen?
I went to the childcare fair, October eleventh, at, um, Heritage National Bank with United Way about the childcare needs in the community and options that they were proposing. Some areas have been working on a community level with, um, churches and schools and, just trying to get the daycare needed so that the workers in the community can work and not have it an extra burden on the family, but, and then have, um, working with legislative stuff so they can have tax deductions and. I think. Oh, um, Transportation Alliance had their, um, candidate forum in town, so I went to that. And then later I'll ask about some more stuff on Transportation Alliance meetings coming up. With the commissioner concerns or whatever.
Okay.
That it?
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, uh, Commissioner Johnson, you took a lot of my stuff, so thank you for that. Um, I do, I do think the interviews went very well, we had some very good candidates there. Um, we, I did sit on the Anoka, um, uh, advisory, um, board where we have our beds and stuff like that. One of the things that came out of that is, i- we have a bed, but if they're full, they're full. And, uh, um, it doesn't mean we're guaranteed a bed. And I know that, I believe it was Commissioner Phobie brought, brought up and said, well, if we're paying for a bed, we should have one. And they, they respond, well, the reason that they're, um, affordable and, and they're keeping our costs down is to give them opportunities to sell beds to other counties and stuff. So we, we are not necessarily guaranteed a bed there, so just wanna make sure everybody's aware of that one. Um, the, uh, the other thing on that is we gotta be very careful about who's on these meetings because Commissioner Heinon and myself were on there and, and you were on there as well. We could, we, if he went to drop off, we could've had a, a, a bad deal there, so, um.
One thing to share about that, if you're the alternate, if one of us cannot make it, we will let you know so that you can join in, other than that, don't join in.
Yep.
Yeah, but my, my, the mix-up was it said, instead of required there to, so I, I did the requirement.
At the end of the day, you're the alternate. If we cannot make it, we are supposed to let you know, and this goes to all board commissioners. If you cannot make your assignment, your committee assignment, you ask your alternate to attend. If at that point in time, there's no communication, then we're always assuming that the regular board members will be doing that.
In addition to that, I did do the Alberta with, uh, um, Amanda as well, Alberta Township, and thanked them for everything they've got going on, that, that meeting went really well. We did have our ditch authority, uh, tour yesterday, so no matter, every meeting, we gotta get ditches in there too. Um, with that, that's really all I had, I thank Commissioner Heinon for covering me on the APO meeting, so I.
That's right, I did do that.
I had a, I, I had a family deal come up, so thank you, other than that, that's it.
Okay, great, well, I wanna thank, uh, Commissioner Johnson for running the board in my absence. I also, I did attend a Shaq retreat, and that was actually very meaningful to me at that point in time. Uh, it's all about community health, each, give me a minute here. Let's see, MDH and CDH, it's all about combining everything together, transforming our healthcare, our health system. Uh, we had speakers from Washington that, uh, went through the same process, and it's a very long process, very hard process, it's all about funding through the legislators instead of a grant system. So more to come on that, but that was very interesting. Uh, I also, uh, we had the Mayhew Creek, were you with, you were there, right?
Yeah.
In attendance on that too? Talking about County Road Twenty-nine and Cassaw One in front of the high school. And actually, there's gonna be an open house October twenty-fifth from.
Correct.
Five to seven, I believe it is, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, then I also had Career Solutions that I'm the board chair of. Basically, we're going through our bylaws and our board agreement updates. Kind of the interesting thing is that they gave a report on the job market. Right now, in Minnesota, we're at one point nine percent unemployment rate. There's one person for every four jobs out there and that one individual needs training. They are speculating we're gonna be in this position for the next five to ten years. So this is gonna be interesting, uh, I can forward a lot of this information to you if you want to. Uh, let's see, other than that, then the cow meeting yesterday too, of course, walking ditches.
Yep.
But I can tell you, you get more out of it, doing it that way, than you do looking at it on the screen. For, you know, so we've got a lot of, a lot of issues coming forward with these ditches that we're gonna have to clarify.
Mr. Chair, one quick comment if I could, uh, just a reminder to the board that this Thursday is the Foley Area Cares Touching Table Event at New Life Church at noon.
Yep.
Okay.
One, one comment I had too is I did get my formal acceptance to the NACO broadband committee, so.
And you filled the last position, I understand.
Last position, yep.
Great, that's gonna be great.
If there's one that opens up, I'll be looking at, to my right over, yeah, exactly.
Good for you, okay, anything else on meeting updates? Next, comments by commissioners, Commissioner Schlangen, you said you had something about transportation?
Uh, yes, Transportation Alliance, um, is having their, um, conference in St. Cloud, the twenty-fourth through the twenty-sixth at the River's Edge. The full three-day thing is three hundred dollars and you don't have to worry about overnight stuff, cause I live in town, so. If I could be able to go to that.
That's this month?
I believe it's the, I have it written down, it's the twenty-fourth through the twenty-sixth.
Of October?
Yep.
October or November?
October. And then in November, they have their annual meeting in the cities, um, on November ninth. If that works into the schedule, if I could go to that too.
So you'll be missing the AMC district meeting, the twenty-fourth?
Um.
Monday?
It's eight o'clock in Litchfield.
I'll, I'll make that, cause this is later. Yeah, I'll make the Litchfield one.
Do we need an approval for the three hundred, if so, I could make a motion? Monty?
Um, good question, I know board approval is required for out-of-state travel. I guess in this instance, I probably would recommend board approval, you know, typically all board members go to AMC, that's reasonable customary, and this would, this kinda falls outside what, you know, normally occurs with the board member conferences, so that's probably a good idea.
Is your mic on? Is your microphone on?
I'm sorry, it's not.
Thank you.
I'm usually the one telling you if your mic on.
That's why I said it. Hope you heard that.
Yeah, we did.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I would assume that it's probably not in St. Cloud each time, I, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I don't believe so.
Right.
I, I would move approval of the three hundred dollars.
Second.
Got a motion, a second for approval of the three hundred dollars for Commissioner Schlangen to go to the Transportation Alliance in St. Cloud? Any further discussion, if not, I'll call the question, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Anything else, Commissioner Schlangen?
I did have a concern from, um, Minden Township. They had, the board was, had, um, a resolution that they wanted to use the, um, not use the machines but hand count this year, and they were told that they can't. Do we have, how far back was it that machines were approved and what was that process, or?
Machines for what, I apologize. Boy, this.
Elections.
Election voting machines instead of hand counting?
I don't think, we don't have any.
We don't have any say, I believe, on that, that would be that department down the str, down the street.
I think they have to have permission from the board to.
To do hand counting versus machines?
No, I, the, the, the board has the authority to say if it's to, to the auditor, what.
I highly doubt that.
I think the board has that.
That would be giving direction to an elected official.
Correct, yeah, so at that point in time, we cannot do that to an elected official.
And in that instance, you're referring, of course, to the auditor treasurer.
Correct.
Who's responsible for the maintenance provision of the voting equipment.
Right.
To the township and also the training for that equipment.
Would you agree, Monty, that we went, this board would not be able to direct an auditor treasurer to change election?
I would agree with that statement, yes.
I didn't bring the statues along, but it was looking like it was from the governing bodies that.
That would probably be a Secretary of State.
Yep, Steve Simon.
I, I, I would certainly recommend.
And there, and there's nothing at the state level.
Folks in Minden Township really should have that conversation with.
The local level that.
Auditor Treasurer's office.
That's, this is beyond our role right here. This'll have to go to the auditor treasurer's office.
Yeah.
For clarification and for them to make that decision, I will not overrule that.
I'd be surprised if we could.
Yeah, and you're right, we won't be able to anyway.
So you, you haven't had a resolution that you had signed to use the.
To buy, we paid for.
Yep, we paid for all the machines.
With grant money.
That they're, but they're supposed to be used by every precinct, or you haven't made a resolution about that?
You know, that's out of my jurisdiction, I just don't, don't know that question.
Okay.
You're just gonna have to walk down the r, down the street, down the path, down the hallway, you don't have that conversation with the auditor treasurer's office.
Okay.
Commissioner Johnson?
Well, we have a, we have a Minden Township supervisor here, so I don't know if he'd want to speak to it or not, but.
Or we can.
Long story short.
I'd like to talk with you anyway.
Long story short, there's a little confusion here, one of our board members, clerk, supposedly did some checking on this. Don't know where she got her information from, but it got resolved that the auditor treasurer has full control over how they wanna do the elections as far as elections, so on and so forth. At the time, when we were told the information, we were on board to go paper. But after, when we found out what was going on and somebody didn't do their homework completely, we understood the situation, we just left it why.
Okay, great, thank you for checking in on that, Mark, appreciate it. Any other commissioner concerns, comments? Okay, set committee of the whole meetings, Monty?
Just a couple, Mr. Chair, uh, you are invited to an open house for the Kasha One traffic study. Uh, and that's the APO sponsored traffic study on that quarter. That event is October twenty-fifth from five to seven at the Sock Rapids Government Center. October twenty-fifth, five to seven PM, Sock Rapids Government Center. Secondly, um, I believe there's a desire to hold a committee hold to discuss highway issues, transitional highway issues. Uh, let's look in at next week.
Really?
Of course, as you know, you just mentioned you have the AMC District Five meeting Monday morning, the twenty-fourth. What seems to be the best day of next week for this?
Tuesday morning.
Yep.
I always block off Tuesdays.
Just a thought, I'm fine with Tuesday, but just a thought, we have our BEP quarterly along with a meeting with their board after on Thursday?
No, I said Tuesday, the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, no, I understand, but I'm just saying we're together with the BEP quarterly meeting and then the BEP board on Thursday, if it's something you wanna do right after that, since you're already together, or we certainly can come in.
The BEP board is gonna be out in the clearings in Sock Rapids versus here.
That's correct.
I'm misunderstanding something here.
Well, I just didn't know if you.
He, he was wondering if you wanted to parlay that with that, with that, I may have a conflict on being there on that, that twenty-seventh.
Okay, so then let's do Tuesday morning. Nine o'clock? Nine o'clock? Tuesday, the twenty-fifth. Tuesday, the 25th at 9:00 AM here in the boardroom.
Commissioner Schlangen, you will be gone, I'm assuming?
We heard, we heard you say earlier that you had the Transportation Alliance Conference, the 24th through the 6th.
What time is the conference?
Oh, that time. That's, that's right in town.
I know what times it starts. I mean, are you going to be able to make this cow or not, or do we have to reschedule?
Perhaps move it a little earlier, maybe 8:00 AM if you needed to.
That may be a problem for Commissioner Pop, but I don't want to speak for him. He tends to say no to eight o'clock.
He needs a little more time in the morning. Okay, sure.
He is coming from Clearacross to County.
What are we discussing next week?
Transitional highway.
So it's, it's really issues to discuss with Mark and Chris, the transitions, who are, you know, a successor, providing coverage for, you know, essential highway functions and so on. I think that's the bigger purpose for that committee of the whole.
Mr. Sheriff, if I could, I think that's very important that we do that on the 25th and maybe just throwing out there.
I can, I'll, let's get the meeting in town and come up for that.
Well, even if it's, even if you're an hour late to your meeting.
Yeah, if you're here for an hour, that'd be great.
Yep, then you can head thereafter.
Yeah, since it's, it's close, I'll just. Not a problem, it's not, not miles away.
Okay, so Tuesday, the 25th at 9:00 AM here in the boardroom.
Okay.
And that's all we have.
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval of the cows as presented.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second for the cow. In favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Oh, I got one more update. I did, I did go the APO. I'm sorry. On your behalf.
Thank you.
It was a very lengthy discussion about how to support Benton County and Commissioner Kapinski going to DC and the APO Board chose not to help finance the trip to DC.
Obviously, Commissioner Kapinski is here.
So that's why we've got Commissioner Kapinski here.
Well, I.
But they will, they will be sharing our concerns, our thoughts.
Yep.
And you gave them the books too and they're going to.
Actually, Chris did.
Or Chris did, and they're actually going to be talking and helping us out with that process too.
Correct. It was, Commissioner Persky and I had a long conversation about a few things and, and we thought that maybe him and Brian Gibson approaching it this month would be good and he had thought potentially February, when NACO is out there, might be a great time for a commissioner from Benton County to go out there. So we, we basically just said, well, we'll stay back this time and potentially look at it in February again.
Yep, so, okay.
Thank you for that too.
That's all I have. Motion.
Second.
But great, we got a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, we're adjourned, 10:11. Thank you, everyone.